Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for August 5th, 2019 to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee's Board.
Here.
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 Okay, confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin?
I confirm that draft agenda was published on 1st of August. The final agenda is posted on August 1st at all three village posting locations. I have a copy of the affidavit in my folder that confirms that posting. And the final agenda and meeting packet was made available online on August 1st. All public hearing notices were mailed and published as required.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our first order of business under old business is to discuss and take action on village trustee vacancy. So we conducted four interviews last week in regards to the opening for the village trustee position. We had nine candidates that had originally applied, and we interviewed four of them, trustee Zitzelberger and I. So I'll say thank you to Joe first off for helping out with that and going through and asking questions. Some which were, you know, easy probably questions for the candidates, some might have been more difficult. But it's my role as village president to make a recommendation to the village board. The four that were in on the interviews, Nyla Frye, Roxanne Johnson, Anne Lewandowski, and Kristin Rungy, they all had great qualities. It's never easy when you're getting, you know, coming front and you feel like you're in a spotlight and you have a camera on you at the time, and most people don't have that in their normal daily life, so it's difficult for people. But they all had great qualities, great information that they provided for us. The questioning was good questions for them, very appropriate. And so my role is to recommend to our board, who I'm recommending, and it'll be your job to ask questions if you have any questions for either Joe or I. And we'll go from there. But what I will tell you is that I'm recommending Kristin Rungy as our next village trustee. Some of the things that I saw and heard that I thought were appropriate for the position, one that stuck out to me is that she doesn't have any agenda other than to serve the village. She grew up in a similar farming community here in Wisconsin. Her experience and knowledge working with UW Extension and expertise in housing and economic development can vastly assist us with our board work. Her life experiences will also help our board and community with issues in front of us right now. She's been in nonprofit fundraising with Red Cross. She has an excellent grasp of the topics we as a board are dealing with, and she exemplified her, or she really exuded that during the interview process. She has a positive outlook on Wanaquie and keeping it a great place it is. With that, I'm recommending Kristin Rungy. Any questions from board members? Or, Brian, I believe we need a motion in a second?
Yeah, you'd need a motion and a second to move forward.
Any questions? Or a recommendation?
I have no questions, but I'll accept the recommendation of the interviewers and nominate Kristin Rungy to be our next board member.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call it to question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. I believe all the candidates are in the crowd tonight. Thank you again for applying for the position. I continue to encourage everybody in our community that's interested in our government, interested in our community, to volunteer for our committees, beyond those committees. And if you have interest, run for the village board. It's a great life experience, I will tell you that. So with that, we have a nice crowd tonight, so there's nothing probably on the agenda that people are interested, but kidding. Everybody's, everybody awake? Nobody's sleeping? It's the end of the day? Okay. Very good. Okay, under old business, I'm sorry, consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I look for a motion?
I'll just note that there was updates to item number one that didn't change the substance of them, but that's it.
Yes, for the other board members, Caitlin had sent out an email earlier today with those, and thank you, trustee Zitzelberger.
So I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Joe Zitzelberger?
Second.
Second by Bill Randam. Any other comments? Call to question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Public comment, is there anyone here that would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening?
I have two public comment, first one is Maria Pat of 1000 Westford Drive.
First of all, the library is very nice. I enjoyed going to see it. So thank you to anyone and everyone who participated in putting that really nice place together. So as a member who used one, the first library I used was over on the other side of where the fire department is. This is much nicer. Second of all, I would like to still keep the idea open of the old library possibly becoming a place for historical Wanaquie and the historical society. I've heard people talk about that, and people are interested, and that would be a great place, I think. And third of all, I would like to see some of the other parks in Wanaquie being used for biggie guns on an annual basis besides the ones that are being used all the time now. That'll get all of Wanaquie to see the other parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second sheet is from Wendy Vincent. Were you hoping to speak during the short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll file that with Todd. That's all I have.
Okay, Todd, any comments for you?
I would echo the comments about the library. It was, maybe you have some thoughts too, but I think the highlight, at least for me, was to stand there at the door when we, after we cut the ribbon and hold it open for hundreds and hundreds of people, young and old. It was a pleasure to hold the door open for their library.
I can't say anything more than that. There's nothing that I saw, I've seen that's greater than watching all members of the community, both young and old, walking past as you're opening the doors, you said, just with the excitement on their faces and what we're able to provide as a community for their library. So it's exciting stuff. So the board members, current and future, well done. All right, presentations. Dane County update from county supervisor Tim Kiefer.
Can I use the podium?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I'm gonna keep this quick because I know we have a big crowd, and I suspect most of you are probably not here to hear the Dane County update. But I did, first of all, want to say, if you remember only one thing that I say in my brief presentation, it is that I work for you. That applies not only to the members of the village board, but also to anyone, everyone here, assuming you live in the village of Wanaquie, because my district, the district that I represent on county board includes the entire village of Wanaquie. So that's the number-one message I want to send out, that I work for you and I report to you. And one thing that I think is very important with regards to my relationship with the village board is things that the village board wants me to convey to the county board, my job is to advocate for you on behalf of the county. So that, that's probably the most important thing. I did want to schedule this for August for two reasons. One is that the county board budget season gets underway in September, so this is a good time to get input about the county budget before things really get underway. And then I also wanted to schedule for a time when we would have a new member of the board appointed. And I achieved that goal, I guess, minutes ago with having the new person appointed. So congratulations to Kristin Rungy. I'm really happy for you. I look forward to working with you. And I just want to briefly touch on what I see some of the issues are coming with the county budget, as well as one issue that's no longer on the county budget, it's been completed. I'm gonna run through them very quickly, and because it's on the agenda, if anyone has comments or questions, be happy to take them. First is the Dane County renovation of the Dane County jail. This is going to be unusual budget season in that the biggest decision of the budget season really was already made in a separate vote that came before the formal budget, which was a decision to renovate the jail and to keep the jail downtown. I know there'd been talk about potentially moving the jail out of downtown. Various spots had been thought about. They were investigated, that was rejected. As you all know, if you follow this issue, I was concerned that there was a possibility of the jail being built at the Sheriff's Department Training Facility on Highway 19 in Westport. That is definitely not happening, and I'll repeat it again, there is no chance whatsoever that there's going to be a jail built in Westport. So just so you know, that is completely off the table, that's been investigated. It turns out that wouldn't save us any money, so we're not going to do it. The jail will be downtown, which is where it's been since the 1840s, I believe, and we're going to be doing a renovation of it for about $148 million. It will be the most expensive capital project in the history of Dane County government. It's not cheap to build a jail, it's an unusual construction project because unlike any other construction project, the people who are the tenants in the building don't want to be there and don't necessarily want to cooperate with the construction, so it's an expensive place to renovate, but we have to do it. The Alliance Energy Center, again, potentially a big capital project, but again, the decision to some extent has already been made in that the county went to the state government as part of the state government budget process, asked for $30 million to help with the renovation of the Alliance Energy Center. That was in Governor Ziver's budget, was taken out of his budget by the legislature. Without that 30 million, I do not think a major decision on Alliance Energy Center will be forthcoming in this budget. I might be wrong, but I doubt it without the 30 million in state government funding. The proposal that's been out there is a total project of about 300 million, of which about 90 million would be public investment, and the rest from the private sector, the hotels and restaurants and the other private investors that would go into the projects. All just a idea at this point, nothing's been agreed to. I certainly don't have a position on it one way or the other, I'm just getting information from people and seeing what the options are, but unlikely it will move forward in this budget process. Third point, Highway M, again, that's being studied, no decision has been made other than there seems to be a consensus that the current Highway M is dangerous and it's too much traffic on too few lanes, and something is going to happen with M, but no decisions are made on that. That process is ongoing. We're still getting input from the public. There have been two public involvement meetings, and there'll be a third meeting that will be coming up this fall. And there's also the opportunity, you can go on the website of the Public Works Committee, there's an email address that you can also email your comments in too, and that email address is dumphy@countyofdane.com, D-U-N-P-H-Y. That's Pamela Dumphy's email, and she's the project coordinator. Fourth point, flooding prevention, flooding mitigation. Obviously, last August, we had major problems with flooding. Water table is still high here in Wanaquie and elsewhere. County invested a lot of money in the 2019 budget to deal with flooding, including buying land in flood-prone areas, wetlands to help absorb flooding, buying weed cutter boats to help with the flow into the Yhara River to keep that flow open, which we learned was one of the major things that led to the flooding last summer, that not being able to get enough flow through the chain of lakes. That's something that we continue working on. So those are the four things that are to some extent in the future, working on now. And I just wanted to touch very briefly on something that's not in the budget, but I think needs to be recognized, which is the major renovation that happened at Schumacher Farm Park. The Red Barn, also known as the Center for Rural History, that barn was built 10 years ago, had been vacant and not built out without anything going on with it for over 10 years. The county, over the course of several years, invested a total of $585,000 in county money. The village, I know, contributed. Town of Westport contributed, a lot of individual donors and businesses contributed, and everyone came together, and it's a really nice facility now, and I think is a real asset to the community. So I just wanted to mention that, very thankful for the contribution of the village of Wanaquie and the village board here supporting it to add to the $585,000 that the county did. So that just signaling for you what the issues are. If there is any questions, comments, I would love to hear, because that way I can take it back to my college on the county board and say, this is what people in Wanaquie are concerned about. So I'll just leave it at that.
Board members, any questions?
I'll just echo your statements about the water tables. I happened to be up in Door County this past weekend, and there's some pumps run 100% of the time, and the piers are actually underwater in Lake Michigan in a lot of cases. So water table's very high right now across the state, I think, not just here.
Yeah, absolutely. And thankfully, we've had a, you know, relatively dry summer. I think if we had a summer, we, you know, the whole month of August is still ahead of us, things, you know, knock on wood that things will not have the problems that we had last year with flooding. But the problems we had with flooding last year really didn't arise until August, so we've still got some ways to go. But we're hopeful that the changes we've made this year, if there is heavy rainfall, we'll be able to clear the water from the Yhara better than we did last year with clearing out some of these choke points that was keeping the water from flowing south.
So Tim, you mentioned Highway M?
Yes.
And that, and obviously, it's very initial phases here, nothing is set in stone. We absolutely have a traffic potential problem in Wanaquie at some point as we grow. I know that North Mendota Parkway's kind of been a figment of imagination at this point. But as the growth is occurring not only here but all around us, what's going to be the process in your mind that's going to happen to change that? Because I don't believe M is the only solution.
You don't say the last sentence again?
Because I don't believe M is the only solution.
Correct. I want to make it clear, the Highway M project and North Mendota Parkway are separate projects that are independent of each other. Highway M, because it's a county road, that's something the county can do more or less independently. And so that's why we decided we want to work on M and making improvements to M is something we could do relatively quickly. So that's M. But North Mendota Parkway is something, the only way that's going to happen is in partnership with particularly the state government. And one thing we did this year was we updated the legislative agenda that the county has. So the county actually has basically a list of things it wants to achieve at the state government level, and made sure that we included in there North Mendota Parkway and our support for building North Mendota Parkway. That's not just my opinion about North Mendota Parkway, that is the policy of the county board that we voted on, that the county supports building North Mendota Parkway. And we hired a new lobbyist who works exclusively for Dane County to advocate for the county's interests with the legislature, and our legislative agenda dictates what it is she advocates for. And North Mendota Parkway is one of those things, and I have spoken with her about North Mendota Parkway, emphasized to her how important it is to us in Wanaquie, and she, believe me, is definitely aware, very aware of the importance that I put on this issue. And I think that it does need to move forward, and it's going to happen in partnership with the state government. The state government frankly has had a pretty dysfunctional situation with regards to transportation funding for a while now, and what I've been told by the lobbyist is things are so backlog at the state government just with repairing state highways right now that are in disrepair, to actually build new state highways is a big stretch. Having said that, Dane County has more population growth than anywhere else in this state, and to the extent there's going to be new roadways built, I think it needs to be here in Dane County, because that's where the population growth is happening, more so than anywhere else in the state. So yes, it's a huge priority for me, and I want to also recognize Eileen Bruskowitz, who was my predecessor on county board and who advocated for this issue during her time on county board, and I agree with her very much on North Mendota Parkway, and I keep working on it. And it's just going to be a matter of getting the stars to align, of getting the state government in line with the county government. The county government's definitely on board with it, but we can't do it on our own. So that's maybe a longer answer to the question of what you wanted, but I could talk for a long time about North Mendota Parkway.
No, that's great.
But I imagine people are here for other things, so I don't want to talk too much.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. And then if anyone in the, you know, audience wants to email me, call me, whatever, I love it when people contact me, that allows me to know what you want and do my job of representing you. So thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I'm leaving now, but that's only because I got to go to Westport to give the same presentation to the Westport Town Board, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, next we've got Dane County Cities and Villages Association update. Todd, are four of us here?
Good evening, I'll be somewhat brief, because I know you've got a long agenda, but I thought I'd also use this time to kind of introduce myself in the Dane County Cities and Villages Association, for those of you who don't know who we are. My name is Forbes McIntosh, I'm the lobbyist for the Dane County Cities and Villages Association, and what you call a contract lobbyist, I represent a lot of different groups. I've been representing DCCVA since 2005, so about 14 years now. There's 28 cities and villages in Dane County, all but two are part of the association. That's the village of Rockdale and Black Earth. Basically, I'm your lobbyist at the state capitol, the Dane County Board, and at the regional committees and commissions. And I live such an exciting lifestyle when I'm lobbying the state during the day, at night. Like you, I do meetings, but I'm doing meetings usually at the different regional commission meetings or at the Dane County Board. I'm just gonna read to you quickly the DCCVA mission and the purpose, just so you know what the organization you paid for and belong to means. The mission statement adopted by DCCVA defines it as a partnership to promote the improvement of Dane County region by serving as an advocate for common goals. The mission is fulfilled through the regular establishment of goals determined by the members. The purpose of DCCVA, to maintain and exchange information, discuss problems and solutions of mutual concern, to monitor and inform members of pertinent legislative matters of the state of Wisconsin, Dane County, and other units of government, and through appropriate means to contact and attempt to influence these other units of government to be more responsive to the needs of cities and villages, and to address other matters of common interest to the membership. What I'll say is, in my 14 years working with the Cities and Villages Association, the one thing that I take away is, we have our chief elected officials that attend the meetings, and we also have administrators. The one thing that's been good is it's been a good share of resources between the elected officials and the municipalities, and oftentimes when we have disagreements, it's handled because you all know each other well enough, or I get contacted to help make the connection and deal with things. I should also point out that City of Madison's also part of the association, they have been since 2005 as well. That's not how the association started. The association started probably to deal with the City of Madison and to deal with Dane County and the state, and then City of Madison came on board, and we really haven't had the battles that once existed. We tend to work well together with all the municipalities. In fact, we seem to be in the same boat on a lot of the same issues. We meet every other month, evenings or stacks of evening, and over the lunch hour to deal with folks, and I know one thing you don't need is warm enough to go to. But when I first started representing Cities and Villages, pretty much everything was about battles we were having with the county, the county board, the county executive, with the state. But I will say, over the years, that's changed. Since we've been working together, now I'd say a lot of the issues that come up, usually land use, policy, transportation issues, points of contention, a lot of that now is dealt with, you know, Dane County Towns Association, the Cities and Villages Association, and the county folks up front. Sometimes not, but it's been a change from 15 years ago, because before, I don't think anyone cared and would roll out policy initiatives and see who could roll over to get things done. It's been a much more cooperative effort. Over the past year, our meetings have, we've been changing. We used to be dealing with situations, now it seems to be more educating our elected officials who attend the meetings on issues that we see coming forward from other, what we see in other states or other municipalities, to issues that we know that are going to be impacting us. Over the last year, we've had speakers and educational forums on sustainability, transportation, and we also held a local roads workshop, trying to share resources and also identify ways to lower costs. Of course, flooding and stormwater runoff and future weather projection issues, homelessness, affordable housing and workforce housing, university alliance, and that's Uni-verse, Univer-City, C-I-T-Y, alliance at UW. In our last meeting, we had the city-county public health speaking about the regulation of Airbnbs and dangerous animal ordinances, one of the issues I know you're going to be dealing with. The point is, through our chief elected officials and seeing the issues the municipalities are facing, we're trying to not just be the lobbying entity and always taking on the issues, but also trying to educate folks so as they hit your community, you're prepared for it. And I have to say, when I, again, when I first started, it was all about disagreements. Now those seem to be more at the forefront, and we seem to be trying to figure out how to cooperate in some respects. We put out a Monday newsletter, if you don't get it, let me know, but you should get a newsletter. We try to keep it concise, because we know you have too much to read as already, but it's usually three or four articles, what we see are important for the region or at the state level for Cities and Villages Association. And then it's just a listing of all county, regional, and state public hearings and meetings that are going on that should be of interest to you. For the state capitol, just know that we do our best not to duplicate what the league of the Wisconsin municipalities is already doing. They're already a strong organization, they're a good organization, but sometimes we can assist them, because unlike a lot of the other state, we're so close to the capitol, we'll have our elected officials come in, but then there are times when there are issues that are going to be specific to this region that the league will support, but I'll take the lead on. Like jurisdictional transfer roads, legislation we passed last year, aggregate mining issues that have been coming up in the state budget or coming up as separate legislation, and the wheel tax. We've been having a lot of voice in there, helping the league on the issues, but also because it impacts a lot of our members very directly. You should, I'm not sure if you know this, but the Cities and Villages Association has direct appointments with the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, three of them, the Dane County Lakes and Watershed Commission, and the Dane Comm Governing Board. And though we don't have direct appointment to these other entities, I tend to staff and the association works to get the folks identified and appointed with the Madison Transportation Planning Board, the NPO, and the Madison Metropolitan Super District. I guess the point I'm making for there is, a lot of those key appointments, three of those entities have a huge role and a huge stake in what land use planning for this area is going to be. And usually, the confrontation on land use planning is home rule for cities and villages and the disagreements between the other government stakeholders on how cities should be growing or not growing and their mindset. I will say, even though there's a lot of cooperation, there's still a lot of disagreements, especially with land use, as you're probably well aware. When it comes to regional planning, that's the one thing I think we're all kind of failing at at the moment, trying to figure that out, because regional planning requires all the different stakeholders wanting to work together towards regional planning. We still seem to be stuck at every entity trying to figure out how to control growth, and specifically on cities and villages, hitting at the heart of our home rule issues. Some of the issues that we're focusing on now, and you're probably going to be hearing a lot more about in the near future, of course, land use policy, stormwater runoff in your Yhara lake levels, that's been a big issue since last year. Transportation infrastructure policies with jurisdictional transfer, resurfacing, reconstruction, and cost sharing, and operation and maintenance cost sharing. I suspect we might be seeing more regional policies on that, instead of just negotiating by community with the county. Regional transit, that is something that seems to be coming up more lately, especially with the City of Madison and others, trying to figure out how to truly get at regional transit. Don't have an answer for that, but it's one that I think a lot of the stakeholders are beginning to come together to work on. Identifying opportunities for coordinating cost-sharing government services, that's something a lot of chief elected officials have asked us to do. There are some issues that are difficult to talk about, especially for elected officials dealing with cost-sharing. You're probably, oftentimes, or as you're gonna see, I'm probably gonna get more involved, because hopefully I can help mediate where we can find solutions or coordinate efforts. Also, we're, one of the top issues is dealing with mental health and protective placements, a growing problem in all of our communities. The biggest instigator of conflict and all this is levy limits. You're no stranger to it, but the imposition of levy limits has caused from state government, county government, city, town, of all who's going to pay for something, and even though it needs to be paid for. And that's where a lot of our disagreements come from, in addition to land use planning. But I do want to remind you, if you're, if the village is facing an issue with a state agency, the county board, one of the regional commissions, I'm here as a resource. I'm probably one of the few people that's attending most of the regional commission meetings, so all the commissioners know me, and I can be a resource if you're running into issues. When it comes to state stuff, whether it's legislative or whether it's a state agency, I'm gonna say most people in most state agencies know who I am. I've been doing this a long time. So if you're having a problem or you're running into a barrier, give me a call, because I might be able to help. At least I can point you in the right direction, or maybe it may just be some phone calls I can make attending a meeting with you. But I'm here to serve you as a lobbyist, and I'm kind of the unofficial executive director of the association as it seems to be going. But I thank you- But I thank you for allowing me to speak. But if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Forbes. Questions? From anybody? No?
I was that good.
Are you going to be able to stay for a little while to hear some comments from Forbes?
Sure. I know there's, there's an issue coming up that I'd like to hear a lot about.
Thank you.
Hearing a lot of complaints at, at different levels.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forbes.
Thanks, Forbes.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a public hearing, public hearing and discussion action on potential regulation of short-term rentals. Brian, do you want to lead off with this, or do we just want to go right into the public hearing?
I can, however you guys want to approach it. I mean, we had a, a meeting, I think, I'm not sure if it was the last Village Board meeting or the one previous to that. I explained to you that there are certain, there's certain authorities that we have as a municipality to regulate short-term rentals. Kind of the easier one relates to the room tax, whether or not you want to have the room tax that applies to hotels also apply to short-term rentals. And that's separate from the second issue, which is regulatory. We cannot prohibit these short-term rentals, but we can regulate them. I've seen them regulated with licensing. I've seen them regulated with zoning, in particular, conditional use permit processes. I've seen this issue come before municipal bodies, and they've adopted ordinances saying we want to have the room tax apply to the short-term rentals, and we want to have zoning applied to it. In that context, it was conditional use permit. I've also been before municipalities who said, "We don't want to regulate these in any way, shape, or form." So there's really not a wrong answer. It's a policy decision for the Village Board. My understanding is tonight, we, we have a public hearing where we want some input from the public as to, you know, where they land on this subject, and then I think the goal is for, after you have comments from the public, you have the ability to have a further discussion yourselves and give some guidance to the Village Staff as to how, if at all, you want us to proceed. And then we would, you know, look at preparing an ordinance. If you want to pursue some type of conditional use permit process, that is a zoning ordinance, so that would, there would be public hearings associated with the adoption of such an ordinance, and that would need to go to the Plan Commission and possibly Joint Plan Commission before it comes to the Village Board. If you want to do the licensing process, you have the, you know, there you have more flexibility. Typically, when you adopt your ordinances and allow for licenses, you don't necessarily have a public hearing before you do that. You definitely have the ability to do that if you would want to. You could also send it to the Plan Commission if you wanted to. And, and we can talk later about, I mean, really, I think that what we're trying to get from you all tonight is, what do you want us to do moving forward? Do you want regulation? And if so, you know, do you want minimal regulation? Do you want significant regulation? And then, once we get that feedback from you, then we can huddle as a staff and kind of figure out, okay, what's the best way for us to move forward, and what's the type of recommendation we'd like to make to you and potentially to the Plan Commissions?
Okay. So I think what we'll do then is open up our public hearing for everyone. You have three minutes for speaking.
Yep.
And Caitlin, you have the forms. If you didn't turn a form in to speak, I need you to do that sooner than later. And we'll just go through those, and you'll read them off and give the people opportunity.
Can I just ask everyone, we do have a timer for the three minutes. It'll beep when your three minutes is done. Please state your name and address for the record. Our first speakers are from Dane County Public Health.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bonnie Koenig. I'm the Environmental Health Services Supervisor for Public Health Madison and Dane County. And I just want to thank you for inviting us to be here tonight to share what information I can about the licensing and regulation we do for short-term rentals and to answer any of your questions. Our health department always welcomes opportunities to collaborate with our communities for the health and safety of your community. So I just wanted to kind of cover just the basics, and so that everybody's up to speed as to what the definition of a tourist swimming house is. A lot of people refer to them as Airbnbs, vacation rental by owner, short-term rentals, or tourist swimming house. That definition includes all of the above. And when our health department is regulating these, our definition is defined as all lodging places other than hotels or motels in which sleeping accommodations are offered for pay to tourists or transients. And anytime we're having a discussion, we always come back to that definition, because that is the main definition that triggers us licensing these types of establishments. We are not going, anybody who falls into that category meets that definition. We are going to license, because we want to have some regulation and oversight for the health and safety of the guests that are using that facility. We do use a platform called Host Compliance to help identify the tourist swimming houses that are operating in Dane County, and currently we have identified about 700. And of that 700, we've been able to license about a third of those right now. We are agents for the state, and so we have to operate under the state statutes and ordinances that are in place, and that would include the county ordinances. And if these tourist swimming houses are serving food, they would require additional licensing or a different type of license to be covered and regulated for those types of processes. If these tourist swimming houses have swimming pools, they would also have to be licensed as a commercial swimming pool, and if they don't meet those regulations, they would not be able to allow tourist swimming house guests to utilize those facilities. And not to be confused with situations where these tourist swimming house operators are allowing their property to be used for longer-term rental, then that does not fall under the, that does not fall under the regulations of tourist swimming house then. So we have to delineate that difference when we're taking a look of how the uses of the swimming pool. So again, our, we're not going to, when people meet that definition I gave, we're going to try to identify them, go out and do a pre-inspection of their facility, and try to regulate for health and safety and get them licensed. And with that licensing, we continue to inspect them and have some regulatory oversight. The only time we would deny a license is if they didn't pass their pre-inspection or there's imminent danger to health and safety. And there's my three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Brad Duffrin, and I apologize if I slobber names. And I also will add one comment.
Keith, do they need to move, or can they stay where they're at?
Either way.
So you can either come up or stay over. Okay.
If you provided written comments, we will timer, and when I get, if I don't get through all your comments and the timer's off, I don't continue reading your written comments, so.
Brad Duffrin with the Dane County Sheriff's Office here. I'm the contract deputy for the Village of Dane and the town of Westport, so Tom Wilson wanted me to come in, since they apparently have meetings the same day and time as you, to make comments about what we're dealing with in Westport. Really, we're finding out about these things just through neighborhood complaints, and we're finding out from police calls that these places are coming up. So we would encourage all municipalities to kind of regulate these somehow, because the only way we're finding out about them is when we get a police call. So really, nobody in the neighborhoods until we get a police call, or, you know, we have no way of knowing what's going on at these places. You know, and we found out that some of these places have been used as party houses, specifically more on the rural areas where they can kind of hide it more. Large parties, hip-hop parties we've had and that stuff, and we'd had to break up, all because we have no idea these places exist. You know, we have no idea who's coming in, who's going out, and things like that, so, you know, we're trying to, you know, within the regulations, the county and the state that is applied to everybody, we're just trying to figure out how to get a hold of what's going on out there and trying to, you know, corral these places and know what's going on. You know, we equate it as, you know, there's being a, you know, hotel dropped in your backyard, you know, you're the next-door neighbor, and all of a sudden there's a hotel there, nobody knew it was coming, there was no, you know, hearing on it or anything like that, nobody, you know, knew it was coming, and now do you want to live next door to a, you know, a hotel and things like that? So we're just constantly kind of having problems and ironing out, but we're kind of hamstrung by the laws through the county and the, that the state has put on us to, to regulate these. But I think coming to you guys and then having a process, and your local police would be able to know that these exist and where they are, and that way your police force would be able to kind of monitor these situations better. You know, as far as the public, what, you know, concerned, I think that's a bigger thing for them, is that we know where these places are and that they can be monitored, otherwise. Again, the only time we're finding out about these places is unfortunately when we get called for an actual police matter, a disturbance, things like that, so. We're trying our best, but it, hopefully with people like you in the town of Westport, then we can start knowing where these places are long before we have problems, and we can monitor them better that way.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Crystal Schifler. Shifler, Schleifer, sorry.
And is it okay? I brought some handouts. I can give them to you guys?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Crystal Schleifer. I live at 1003 Franconia. I'm actually an Airbnb host. So I was at the last meeting and realized that maybe there was some miseducation on a few different things with Airbnb. One of the things that was discussed was the property values being devalued by having an Airbnb near your house. That is actually widely known as not true. The opposite is actually true. I brought a article from, sorry, the Wall Street Journal, that discusses how Airbnb actually has improved the average home rate by 4% in 100 metropolitan areas that it surveyed, and that's from UCLA. An increase of 10% on Airbnb listings equivocated to a .39 increase in property values. So I just want to educate you guys on the, the full gamut of, of what Airbnb really is. My Airbnb personally, I've made a very, very big effort to try to cater to my neighbors. I have even brought a request to have a party at my house and decline the listing to have a party at my house, because I know that my neighbors want a quiet cul-de-sac. Most of my guests are people traveling for work. I have an executive from Renew Energy that comes regularly, and a union painter, and those are two of my more regular Airbnb clients. And I also brought some information from Airbnb specifically that talks about its economic effects in the community. The average tourist spends about $144 per day in the community they're, they're staying in. And I projected that out for what my Airbnb does, and just with my Airbnb alone, it would add almost $100,000 into the community, into small businesses and restaurants. And that's what I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, we have Alexis Buchanan.
My name is Alexis Buchanan. I live at 5556 Polo Ridge. My husband and I have been residents of Westport-Wanakee since 2009. There are many problematic issues surrounding short-term rentals. They include the strain on local law enforcement, the impossible challenge they place on neighborhood watch programs, the noise, the traffic, and the unsettling nature of having strangers coming and going like through a revolving door. Everyone in this room knows what a unique community we have in Westport and Wanakee. We enjoy an outstanding school system, great services, and low instances of crime. Our neighborhoods are safe and friendly. We feel comfortable letting our kids play outside or ride their bikes around the neighborhood. As residents, we support our local businesses year-round. People on short-term rentals don't. We volunteer in our community year-round. People renting vacation homes don't. As residents, we care about our neighbors and we care about our town. When homes in our neighborhood become short-term rentals, when we don't know who is living next to us from one day to the next, we lose our sense of community. This problem is spreading faster than you might imagine. According to a USA Today article about Sedona, Arizona, their city manager said that there are more than 1,000 vacation rentals in the city, about 20% of their inventory. Imagine what the Village of Wanakee would look like with just 10% of the homes being vacation rentals or short-term rentals. We don't want to see that happen here. I'm frightened more houses in my neighborhood will become Airbnbs or vacation rentals, and I don't want to live in that kind of neighborhood. We have an opportunity right now to protect what we love about our community. We have an opportunity to say that the people in our neighborhoods, the people who support this community year-round, are worth protecting. Our neighborhoods are the backbone of the community. When our neighborhoods crumble, our community crumbles. It will fall like a house of cards, one street, one house at a time. And I encourage you to do what it takes to not let that happen here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Terrence Mullin. And again, you can speak from your seat. You don't necessarily have to.
Hi. My name is Terrence Mullin. My wife and I live at 1006 Franconia Court, and that's in Savannah Village. We've lived in the neighborhood since 2004, that's 15 years, and it's, it's a really a nice neighborhood. And I can recall, you know, the little kids, little tots running around, seeing those kids grow up to grade school, then high school, high school sports, off to the UW, and even we had a, one of those children getting married last week. So it is a very nice neighborhood. My interest in being here tonight is to protect the dynamics of that neighborhood. I would like the Village of Wanakee to respect and uphold existing restrictions and covenants that are currently in place in my neighborhood. Specifically, I have the Savannah Village Articles of Covenants right here. It's pretty specific, even though there weren't Airbnbs back when this was written, but Article 3.7, "All lots within the property shall be used only for single-family residential purposes, only for single-family residential purposes." Further on in the covenants, it states, "No noxious or offensive trade or activity shall be carried on within the property, nor shall anything be done which may be or will become a nuisance to the neighborhood." So I believe the covenants clearly define the intentions of the neighborhood, and it does restrict single-room rentals, such as so-called Airbnbs. So I oppose such activity in my neighborhood, and I ask the Village of Wanakee to also acknowledge our covenants and come to that same conclusion. I'd like to thank the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, oh, sorry.
Chris, just can staff provide a bit of clarification on the issue regarding covenants?
Sure. We, we cannot enforce these covenants. The homeowners' associations, to be clear, we don't have the, as I said before, we can regulate these, we don't have the ability to prohibit them. Homeowners' associations may have the ability to prohibit it, and that, that would be a private action by the homeowners' association, the village, or city, or whatever municipality they're located in, would not get involved in that process, though.
Thank you.
Next up is Rhonda Aries.
I'll just stand right here. Thank you in advance for your consideration and attention. My name is Rhonda Aries, and I live on Reynolds Avenue. It's a quiet dead-end road with 36 properties and 75 permanent tenants. Most of our, most of us have our homes as our most expensive asset. We choose our homes and neighborhoods very carefully. Recently, an Airbnb opened for business on our street. For $125 a night, five people can rent the house. It's already popular, given its beautiful setting and affordable price. If it's an average Airbnb, it'll rent for 200 days and five people. It's 1,000 impressions of new people overnighting in our neighborhood. Our Airbnb operators downplay those numbers despite this being the second Airbnb property they have in their portfolio. So whether the number is 1,000, 500, or even 250, the annual volume coupled with the routine influx of transients in our neighborhood is far greater than our population of 75 residents. These renters aren't friends or family. These are heads in beds, business transactions. Is that population density factored into our residential neighborhood zoning? We all know people who use Airbnbs, so despite stories of party houses, I'm going to hope for the best. Most of my concern is about the Airbnb operators, ours included, that aren't on-site at the property when the renters are self-checking in. With a sprinkling of digital correspondence, they're free to come into our neighborhood. This is convenient and efficient for the business owners, but it's likely that those owners will that population density factored into our residential neighborhood zoning? We all know people who use Airbnbs, so despite stories of party houses, I'm gonna hope for the best. Most of my concern is about the Airbnb operators, ours included, that aren't on-site at the property when the renters are self-checking in. With a sprinkling of digital correspondence, they're free to come into our neighborhood. This is convenient and efficient for the business owners, but it's likely that those owners will never meet these people face-to-face. The only people experiencing the renters in person are the seventy-five residents that are living there. The Airbnb operators are absentee. Short-term rentals have replaced the house-flipping boom and bust and have now become the fast-cash real estate boom, creating its own path of destruction along the way. Help us hold the fabric of our community together, and help us stabilize our neighborhoods from an influx of transient rental populations. Please do what you can to discourage short-term rentals by acting on the following three items. Adopt Wisconsin state statute by adding an ordinance to require the seven-day minimum for all short-term rentals. This will help stem that overnight turn in our neighborhoods. Number two, require owner occupancy for all short-term rentals. This engages property owners to be living on-site and discourages this hands-off business approach such as self-check-ins. It's similar to the bed-and-breakfast ordinances that already exist with on-site occupancy. Third, institute residency requirements for all short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Al Bussen.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name's, uh, people know me as AJ Bussen. My wife and I, my wife Colette and I live in the town of Westport. I've been a member of the Wanakee community, actually, since two thousand and one. We moved into Six Mile Creek, and then in two thousand and nine, we moved from Six Mile Creek to Carriage Ridge. Request an action by the village to adopt zoning rules by the way of the Joint Planning Commission. The village of, the village and the town of Westport have joint governance in my R-one zone neighborhood. Some strict short-term rental regulations that we'd like you to consider, and we think need to be adopted to protect our neighborhoods. Wanakee, and I'd, I'd echo the previous speaker, Wanakee should consider a minimum stay of seven contiguous days, and maximum number of days rented to a hundred and eighty. That's what's allowed under state statute today. Wanakee, secondly, should consider a room tax, a conditional use permit, a village licensing process, and work to get in front of the deception that Airbnb is promoting as a sharing enterprise. To operate a short-term rental, number three, Wanakee community licensee must show the property is their primary residence and usually place of return. I'd echo the previous speaker's comments. Another point, hosts have fifteen days to inform the village of any change in name and the contact information who owns and operates short-term rental. Next, a host is required to notify their insurance providers, make sure they have the liability coverage necessary to protect not just their own comp, their own residents, but their neighbor's residents. Wanakee should have the authority to revoke or deny a city license if a rental property adversely affects public health, safety, or welfare of the immediate neighborhood. That should also be deported to the Dane County Public Health. We'd like Wanakee to consider, and Westport, consider hiring staff or assigning current staff hours to short-term rental coordination and licensing, also potentially inspecting or searching for uh, unlicensed rentals that are being advertised. And we also like that person or individuals to be available for responding to complaints. We'd like to consider proactive searches of neighborhoods to avoid them becoming nuisances. Citations and violations of any of the rules should be steep enough to prohibit or inhibit their activity and action. We'd like to echo Dane County uh, Health Department, and that residential pools are not designed for public use. We've learned this recently from their department. Residents that are, have, have built-in uh, homeowner pools or homeowner pools and are advertising that as part of the rental, thank you.
Well, that's not my time.
Somebody else was tired of this. I used to work in extension. They were always, uh, anyway. Residential pools are not designed for public use and should be regulated as such. I guess if folks are irritated about having to use taxpayer dollars to regulate short-term rentals, they should contact their state legislators, and let them know they don't agree with the law past year, last year during the budget process.
Thank you.
Next up is Valerie Lincoln.
Hi, my name is Valerie Lincoln, and we live at fifty-five-ninety-seven Polo Ridge in Wanakee. Um, I want to thank the board for allowing me to say just a few words. We live in Wanakee, and we've been here since two thousand and four. Um, my husband and I have five children who attend the Wanakee Community Schools. Uh, we live in the Carriage Ridge Development, and truly just down and around the block, um, at fifty-six-sixty Cobblestone Lane, there's an active BRBO going on. Um, let me begin by saying also, we value our neighborhood, our home, and our community. We love living in Carriage Ridge. However, we are very concerned about the issues that come with short-term rentals, such as increased traffic flow, alcohol consumption, the constant influx of unknown individuals who have no investment in our neighborhood, the devoting of personal property, and lastly, the safety of our children and our friends and family who come and share in our home in our neighborhood. Um, we fervently stand with our fellow neighbors and ask that you enact strict zoning codes to regulate short-term rentals. Um, thank you. I just, I think that many things that have been previously said, um, respond on. We have a, a very big investment in this community, and we value it, and we like to give back, and uh, we would love to see other people who enjoy it that much stay for longer than a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miriam Block.
Hi, um, my name is Miriam Block, and my husband Jeffrey and I live at five-five-eight-nine Suri Lane in Wanakee. My husband and I chose to come to this community because of the outstanding schools, sense of community, and beauty in the community. There's three themes that I'm very concerned about with our, uh, uh, short-term rentals in our community. Number one, is the sense of serenity. This means a quiet, full of, uh, quiet life and, and wonderful people that dearly care for the property. When you have people yelling "F you" at three o'clock in the morning, putting on fireworks that aren't legal, and partying all night long is not a sense of serenity. Number two is a sense of safety. People that come into these homes are not vetted at all. I had worked as pediatric nurse at UW Hospital for many years. I can tell you firsthand what it's like to hold a child in my arms that was run over by someone speeding down a residential street. I can also tell you what it's like to look in the eyes of a mother who had been partying all night with her friends at a family home, and the child somehow walked into the pool and drowned. What do you tell a mother like that? And I don't care how many hundreds of thousands of dollars some tourist brings to Wanakee. You can never, ever replace the life of a child. And if we don't have these safeguards in place in terms of safety in a home for, for a pool, safety in terms of cleanliness, safety in terms of number of people occupying an area, we are in deep trouble. And number three, I would like to talk to you about a sense of community. Your lawyer talked very firmly and very eloquently to this night about regulations and statutes in our community, in our um, city of Wanakee, and our state. I, as a person that had done a lot of work, uh, with those kinds of areas and healthcare, understand the importance of individual freedom and regulations on the other side. But if we have a situation here where there is no regulation, no oversight, no sense of responsibility by the people that stay in these homes, we are setting ourselves up for many, many problems. So I plead with you to think very long and carefully about this trend that's coming into our community. Not only do I care about the people in this community, I care about the people that are renting these homes and no idea what they're walking into. I don't think the monetary gain that someone is making in the short term is, is any way justifies what the harm could be done to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Wendy Vincent.
I'm, 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 who's Wendy Vincent? I live at fifty-six-sixty-two Cobblestone Lane, three doors down from the RB, RV. And I can just tell you the fact that it's happened in our neighborhood and on the direct neighbors, and I also, one of my best friends lives next to the Airbnb, is Franconia Court, and that it is totally just up their lives. The house next door to the one on Franconia Court is up for sale because they can't stand to live there. I see this destruction of our community, but I see it on a personal level from people I love, and it needs to stop. I know you're restricted by the state by what they did last year, but until it can be overturned, I, I plead with you to use every possible way you have to regulate this and to stop it and to, and deter it until it can be overturned at the state level. This is a worldwide problem, and wherever you travel, they're there, but the world is working on trying to stop it. And I ask Wanakee and Westport to be a leader in that area and use everything we have possible to deter it until it can be ended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Beth Horni.
Hi, I'm Beth Horni, and I live at one-zero-zero-five Franconia Court. Um, next to Crystal and Akil's Airbnb. Um, although I have no problem with Crystal and Akil, and I understand people wanting to do what they want to do with their home, um, it's very difficult to live on a quiet, dead-end cul-de-sac street and have Airbnb right next to you. Um, I watch my grandson, two-grandson, um, three days a week, and when people are coming down and they don't really know where they're going, um, I do think it's a safety issue. It's very uncomfortable to live next to um, a home that is having strangers come in all the time. It's a daily rental, and um, it, it's just very uncomfortable. It's very, um, I don't know who the people are, and as well as you try to vet, as, as good as your intentions are, you really don't know who's coming into your neighborhood. And I'm sorry, Crystal, but I don't think people are spending their money in Wanakee. I think they're going to Madison, and I know that from the number of Ubers that are back and forth at two in the morning, dropping people off, and the traffic going back and forth from your home, past my home, to out of Wanakee, most likely to Madison. Um, you know, I had a daughter that just got married, and when I was first asking, like, what are, what are all these cars with different license plates and what's going on? What are you guys doing? Well, we have an Airbnb. You know, part of me was like, oh, that, wow, that would be awesome. You know, maybe some of my family could stay here. I mean, I get it. That's what you think. But now, living next to an Airbnb, I'm like, wow, what was I thinking? I, I, I've lived here since two thousand and six. Um, the Airbnb's been in operation for, I think, less than a year, um, but the impact has been great. And I don't want to be unneighborly, um, but I really, I can't even tell you what it's like to live next to an Airbnb where you just don't know who's coming in and out, and it's happening a lot. And I know that they really try to be responsible, but I also know that when you're using your home as a way to also gain income, if someone wants to rent out your home, home for like a bachelorette party, which someone did, um, and you, you can't necessarily be there if all your homes are rented out. And even though I cannot say that it's a party house, I know there's, you know, whatever, different, happens in different communities, there's, there's no control. There's, there's no, so I do support regulations, conditional use permit, any zoning regulations, the seven-day, um, it's the daily rental and the daily turnover. That's really difficult. Um, and like I said, or like Wendy said, um, our neighbors on the other side who have two young kids, part of the reason why they are leaving is because it really feels unsafe to have strangers coming in all the time. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Teresa Wilder, submitted written, Teresa, Teresa and Jeff Wilder, submitted written comments, so I'll read those now. Good evening. We live across the street from a very active short-term rental in Westport. In our experience, the short-term rentals are extremely negative for our neighborhood. They are legitimate concerns about safety and security, noise, nuisance, and declining property values, property values when we are suddenly living next to a hotel. Wisconsin Act fifty-nine specifically allows municipalities to, one, prohibit rentals for less than seven consecutive days, two, limit total consecutive days that are rented, three, require a local permit. In addition, municipalities have the ability to, one, regulate parking, two, charge a room tax, three, require a conditional use permit, four, require a license, five, perform reassessments of property values increased for the short-term rentals properties and decreased for surrounding properties. We strongly encourage the board of Wanakee and Westport to preserve our neighborhoods by taking all available steps to limit and discourage short-term rentals. Thank you for your action on this topic. Jeff and Teresa Wilder, fifty-six-six-seven Cobblestone Road. Next, uh, written comments submitted by Colette Bussen of fifty-six-fifty-four Cobblestone Lane. My name is Colette Bussen. My husband and I have-
Can I read my comment?
Yes. We can restart the time.
You ready?
Go ahead.
My name is Colette Bussen. My husband and I have lived in Wanakee, the Wanakee community for eighteen years. Two of our three children completed kindergarten through graduation in the Wanakee school system. Never did we dream that we would live next door to a vacation rental in our residentially-zoned neighborhood. We didn't buy our house by a bar, a hotel, a public pool, or on frat row. We don't live on the Madison Lakes. Wanakee is not known as a tourist destination. It's a quiet, safe bedroom community of hard-working early risers who buy their homes to send their children to an amazing school district and smartly invest in homes that do not lose their value. That last caveat doesn't hold true for me any longer. Our home isn't worth anything if we can't sell it. Last summer, we lived in a neighborhood with next-door neighbors. Today, we live next to an eight-thousand-square-foot, thirteen-hundred dollars per night vacation rental party hotel with seven bedrooms, six baths, a hot tub, pool, fitness gym, theater room, large gourmet kitchen with seating for eighteen, screened porch with TV, basketball hoop, pool table, arcade games, parking for ten in the circular drive, and access to Madison for Badger games for the low-low price of a twenty-five-dollar Uber ride. You can have your wedding, epic bachelor, bachelorette party, Michigan fan club party, post-prom party, or ancestry.com family reunion right next door to me. I'm not exaggerating. We had a fifty-person wedding next door this summer. Just in the past months, we have had hundreds of vacationing tourists from Pennsylvania to Montana staying in a home that is being rented out to sixteen-plus people for all amounts of time, daily, weekend, short stays, long stays. This revolving door of strangers has required our family and neighbors to be hyper vigilant of our safety in our own neighborhood. Anytime spent outdoors in our yard feels like we're in a strange city with leering strangers unloading their luggage and out-of-state plates racing down the street. I'm always checking over my shoulder. If I had small children, I wouldn't let them out of my yard without me. Our windows are never open because the party in the pool and the hot tub next door sounds like it's in my kitchen. My neighbors have set the quiet hours of our neighborhood at midnight on their rental listing. Take one walk with your dog around any of our neighborhoods at ten PM, and ninety percent of this community is already in bed. However, my family is up turning on lights and debating how calling the police will affect our property values, and I do that Monday through Friday. I ask that you stand with the homeowners and taxpayers of Wanakee, not the absentee Airbnb hosts who have turned their homes into unregulated commercial hotels, and certainly not the partying tourists. Libraries, parks, new schools, and community pools are built by those who have a vested interest in the Wanakee community. Unrepentant, absent, greedy Airbnb hosts, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last speaker that I have a slip for is Akil Cooper.
Hello, my name is Akil Cooper. I'm at ten-oh-three Franconia Court. Uh, me and, me and Crystal Schleifer. Uh, and I didn't really have anything prepared, uh, to talk about today, but I just wanted to say, um, that, you know, after hearing some of the concerns, uh, I do believe there should be some type of regulation. I also understand that, um, there is, you know, short-term rentals can't be regulated, uh, to some degree. Um, but, but I would say this, at, at ten-oh-three Franconia Court, I don't know what happens at Cobblestone, I have no clue, um, but I am home. Uh, I've been in the travel industry for ten years. That's how I first heard about Airbnb. I use Airbnb for my own travel. Um, I'm very familiar with how- I'm very familiar with how the whole system works. So before I decided to Airbnb, I didn't understand the safety precautions. I enjoy Airbnb as far as using it for travel, but I also think that it is important to have something here in the area as well. Recently, CrossFit Games was in town and our neighbor did ask us, Beth did ask us to use our house for Airbnb for her wedding because there were no places for her family to be in the area. And, and we told her that we were not able to. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, one room, what, you know. So I, I think, I think the point is, the, the point is, is that regulation is great, but I hear a lot of fear. And again, I don't know what's going on in Cobblestone, but we don't have any police reports. We don't have any safety issues. I'm home just as much as Beth. I, I see you with your grandson. You see me. And, you know, we're, we're always home. So I don't, and when we're not home, if we are traveling for the holiday, we would like the, the opportunity to rent our house out for seven days. That, that's fine too. So that's pretty much my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I'm gonna, anybody else?
I just, I just want to say, we have, we have an Airbnb.
Name first.
Chris Boss.
An address.
And address.
506 Seventh Street. And we've had zero complaints. We're always there. We block off the dates that we're not home so that people aren't coming into our house. We do a check-in every time that somebody comes. They're allowed in through a private access. And they're not coming in and they're not going into our home without our knowledge. As far as, we've, we've never rented it without being there. And I think there's, it's hard because I don't know what it's like living next to somebody that's not there renting it out. However, our experience has been totally different. We get young professionals. We have the right and ability to decline clients if they don't in fact like meet our criteria. We do extensive backgrounds. Airbnb also does backgrounds and removes clients from their website if there's been issues with them. We've had zero issues with it. It sounds like you guys have all had a rough go of it. So to you guys, I apologize. I don't, I don't live in your neighborhood. But we've had zero complaints from our neighbors and/or from our community. We've never called the police. We, it's just been a great experience for us. But we're also very selective. We're not, we're not trying to, I mean, we block off dates that we're not available. So it's a different experience.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment.
If, if you've already commented though, I'm not gonna allow that. It's just anybody who hasn't spoken, if you have.
Don Tierney. We, as a family, probably the way I work my family.
You gotta give your address just like.
Oh, Don Tierney, 3564 Egre Road, Forest, Wisconsin. And when I got into this business, I didn't like developers. I never wanted to be one. When the city of Madison came out and they came out with a curfew plan book, and I think Mr. Tom Bunbury was probably around in those days. And this land was only gonna be able to be developed if it was the next Madison. This is what got us into this. And we, we made some great arrangements. Probably worked my family way past where I should've, built the beautiful parks. And if we really wanted to build a hotel, we probably would've built one. Maybe someday we might. But I think of the hard work that the people have done that have come to Wanaquie and Westport. And I just, it's a terrible thing because they put, they paid a hell of a price, as we have, to build a beautiful neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken?
Yes, I'd like to direct my comment to the village attorney, David Calkins in Westport.
Your address, please.
Excuse me?
Your address.
5114 Reynolds Avenue. You mentioned earlier that the village cannot ban short-term rentals. Is there any way that the residents of the renter can be controlled at the village level to avoid absentee renters? That they have to live on the property or live adjacent to the property or something like that? Or the ability of the village to enforce actually having the person live in the house and rent part of it to a short-term renter? Can the village get involved with either of those aspects?
Well, that was gonna be something that we were gonna cover once the public hearing was closed, but we will get to that topic.
Oh, okay.
All right, anyone else? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing at this point. So one of the things that we have to decide is, one, I think we could, we need to send this to plan to look at.
Well, I, I think, first of all, you, you have the discretion to do whatever you would like. Like, the two ways that I've seen them regulated to this point is licensing and zoning. I haven't seen any municipality do both of those, you know, do licensing and zoning because in theory, you should be able to accomplish in one whatever you're gonna accomplish in the other. But that's something we, you know, we can look at that issue if, if, if you want us to, whether or not you would want to regulate it in both ways. I'm not sure if there would be a benefit to it, but I also don't want to close that door. Definitely, if it's gonna be zoning and a conditional use permit, it definitely then has to go to the, the plan commission. And we've had a number of comments tonight from people, I think, who reside in Westport, who reside in the joint planning area, and it would probably go to the joint planning commission also. I, I do think that depending on what you do tonight, we probably are gonna have conversations with Tom Wilson, the town attorney, because I know just from communications that he's provided to us that this is a hot-button issue in Westport. And Westport is looking at this issue in, in a similar way that, that Wanaquie is looking at it. So I guess you have the discretion to, to send it to the plan commission certainly if you want to. If it's zoning, it definitely does have to go to plan commission.
So I generally wait till the end before I give my comments. So I will, I will do the same this evening. Board members, comments, ideas, thoughts on how you'd like to proceed? Gary, I think you're...
I know how I'd like to proceed. I hate to see people that, you know, have really worked hard in this community have to deal with the issues that we've heard about tonight. But saying that, we have a great partnership with Westport. This seems to be a Wanaquie-Westport community issue. And because of that, I think it needs to go to plan and joint plan and, you know, come up with a, a joint agreement that can come to both boards. And, and we'll get some additional public input, so we may find something out. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to do something today if I could for some of these people out here, but I think the process needs to be gone through to make it work right.
Okay? I'm gonna go like this. Joe?
My, my only concern here is if we head down the plan commission road, are we tying ourselves into a CUP kind of situation? Or can we go there and still potentially end up with licensing or whatever?
I, I would say both. I mean, one thing that I, I would like to get guidance on if we can tonight, and I think village staff would too, is we've heard, we've heard certain statements. I mean, there is a spectrum of regulation that can apply here. And one of the issues, I think one of the things that we can do is require owner occupancy. I don't want to give a firm answer on that, but I do believe that that is something that you would, can include in your ordinance. The, probably the most critical thing is the number of days. We can require the rent to be up to seven days. It can be, you know, anywhere basically from two to seven days. We can't require it to be more than seven days. That is probably, I think, the most critical issue of, of what the regulation is gonna be, is how many days are you gonna require them to be rented? Assume that you're, assuming you're gonna require them to be rented more than one day. I, I think we want to get, if we can, without binding any type of action, because obviously whatever, you know, you're gonna want to see the documents. You're gonna want to see the language before you, the different regulations that would be put in place. Get a feel for, you know, how strong do you want, do you want the strongest regulation possible that we think is legally passable? Or do you want some, the most minimum? Or do you want something in between? That'll help us in, in the drafting of the document. It can go to the plan, you know, go to plan commission for discussion. And it may be that, it may be that you all decide that essentially you want the strongest regulation possible. And it could be that that in fact would be through a licensing process and not through a conditional use permit process. That's work that we would need to be done. My thought is the same regulations could likely be in our ordinance, whether it's licensing or a conditional use permit. One thing that I would tell you is that whenever you have a conditional use permit, you always have to have a public hearing before it's issued. You, if you wanted to in the ordinance, could have a licensing process, but you could also still have a public hearing process as part of the licensing. Many times licensing is either administrative or even if it's not administrative, you know, it comes to you and there's a recommendation by staff. There's not a public hearing and it usually gets approved. You can build into a licensing process, a public hearing process. So I just want to make sure that the zoning isn't the only way to have a public hearing process for each application.
Phil?
Yeah, I think that we should, and if someone's renting out a whole home, have a seven-day minimum. A private home where you went one room at a time, maybe a two-day minimum. I also think that they should be registered. I think the village tax should be collected, like, just like the motels do. These, these Airbnbs are undercutting our motel industry who are paying taxes and et cetera. And licensing, when I stay at a motel, I check in, I give them my license, they know who I am, et cetera. There's somebody there to protect me and protect them from me. I think the owners. I think, I think the owners should be on-site at all time if it's rented out. If it's, if they're not on-site, tough. You can't do it anymore. That's it. You know, that's just my feeling. I, I also feel uncomfortable if I don't know who my neighbors are. It's, it's a, it's a tough feeling. I mean, you, you go outside and see the, a different person there every day. How can you be friends? You know, and that's why you live where you want, because you want to be friends. You want to be part of a neighborhood. If somebody comes in and intentionally destroys your neighborhood, shame on them. I think we should tax them. How we do it is the next thing, and how we check on them and police it is another thing. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think we can afford to hire a person to go around and look for the problem. But I think through the same way it's rented out, there may be a way for us to find out if it's rented and police it and find them very easily. Maybe with an intern even. And we'll talk more on that, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Dr. Rainham.
So I, I very much, some sort of licensity or conditional use, the seven days for sure, the owner residence, the owner on-site, I mean. What I don't know is like, and the taxation, those are all, that's definitely where I'm at. The question that I have is like on size, is there any splitting on, like, the person who has the one bedroom that somebody's there with and they're on attendance, is that different than, as far as the conditional use thing, is that different than when you have 18 people living at your place?
We'd have to look, I mean, that's something that we would have to look at, but we, we can look that, look at that. As to whether or not there's different ways to regulate them depending on how many units are being rented.
I'm definitely for the owner being on-site. I pretty much fill with the question of size.
Aaron?
I was wondering if I got skipped.
I, I, Phil was, Phil was in the way.
I know. I guess we'd echo what they said about the, looking into if we can do something different for a single room versus the whole house. And owner occupancy, making just the primary residence and such. And I'd be interested in if we do, do licensing, also having a public hearing process.
Okay, so I'll just be clear with where I stand. I haven't changed since the last meeting. Very staunchly against this. Orlando, Florida, everybody knows there. What's there? Disney World. Kissimmee, and I even said it right. It used to be Kissimmee to me, but I know it's Kissimmee because somebody told me that when I was there last time. It's known for VBRs. We stay in one every time we're there. The entire subdivision where we're at is all rentals. It's not individual homes for people that we've created. Our, our Wanaquie that we've created long before any of us were here is not to bring strangers into the community on a regular basis. Some of these people, I'm not saying they're all bad people. Don't get me wrong on that. There's fine people that are coming in looking for places to stay. I get that. Where maybe we've fallen down is that we don't have enough of those places for people to come and stay here in Wanaquie. I didn't realize that we had the demand for people to want to come to Wanaquie. That's great. We have some tourist things here. Somebody said we're not a tourist town. We have some tourist things here on that people do like to come and see and visit. But what struck me, and, and thank you for all your comments this evening, I was very concerned about this. We have one-third of them that are licensed at this point. That's a failure, as far as I'm concerned, period, that we don't have that. I'm assuming that since we only have a third that are registered, that we have no coordination with our law enforcement to know where they are. I'm also concerned with that we have to have law enforcement to go and monitor these areas. Why should all the other citizens have to be specifically monitoring certain homes on a regular basis? Okay? We're not doing that at all across the village. I don't think most people want the police that are monitoring them at all the times. Is that fair to say, for those who don't have the police there? But our police have important roles and jobs, and if we're redirecting their activities, I, I just think that's wrong within our community. There are some great points that people have made in here against and for. Obviously, people, there's a need for this, and, and that's the only reason that it can create, be created. Whether it's Wanaquie to Dane, to Rodai, to DeForest, wherever that might be, that this is gonna take in place. The state put this down to us, and, and they made the decision on this. And I was not there and present, so shame on me, I guess, when this was going through at the state level. And they were making this, to put this in. I don't know how many of you were at that, putting up the, wait on, wait a minute, stop, this is not a good thing. So who knows that? But it's happened. And I, I think one of the things that we can do as a board is give our opinion. I'm in favor of putting whatever the strongest restrictions we can possibly put on this are, whether it's through licensing or whatever else within the plan commission. If it's a combination of both, or if we only do one, I'm in favor of that. That, that's where I'm at, is my position. But again, I'm one vote, just like you guys are.
Is the question, is the question, do we send this to plan and joint plan? Is that what we really need to decide to give you some direction?
I would say this. This is what I've heard, kind of the higher points. First of all, we do want to coordinate with the town, it sounds like. We necessarily, I think, have to coordinate with the town. If it's, because if it's gonna be zoning, it's gonna apply to the joint planning area. There's also the potential that the town will adopt a license to apply to all, you know, and the village will adopt a license process. And then there isn't an overlap because town jurisdiction and village jurisdiction each individually handle. But coordinate with the town, at least from this point, probably draft something with, we think is, you know, find the strongest terms and conditions for a regulation, whether it's licensing or zoning as possible, that, you know, we think would be legally upheld. You always have the ability to kind of draw back from it if you want, once you see the language. But it seems like that's, I think from a drafting standpoint, that's gonna be the easiest point of view. We definitely, it sounds like we probably want to have a, when we do adopt an ordinance, because it sounds like we're going to, whether it's a license or a conditional use permit, it sounds like we probably have, want to have some type of public hearing process. Just to let you know, you know, well, a couple of things that you'll have to answer later. Do you want the public hearing before the village board? Or do you want the public hearing before the plan commissions? Typically, a public hearing on a conditional use permit is before the plan commission, and the plan commission makes that decision. You have the ability to adopt an ordinance in here that would say, for this particular initial use permit, we would want it to be, come to the village board. You definitely have the ability to say that a public hearing for a license would come to the village board. I did hear multiple people, at least one, it sounds like would want to see whether or not we have the ability to regulate differently depending if there's multiple units. In other words, if you have one unit versus if you're renting out the entire house, I, I think there may be that, the ability, the ability to do that. I mean, I think one, reasonably, you, you could argue that if you're just renting out one unit, maybe something, somebody who's there for business purposes, probably unlikely to create some of the issues that appear to have occurred with the quote-unquote "party houses" with one unit being rented versus multiple. So I think we'll look into that. I definitely heard owner occupancy is, is important. I think where it, where it also, the next step is, does the owner actually have to be on-site when it's being rented? There's a distinction there where I can live in a house and I can be there just about every day during the week. Sometimes I would rent it out when I'm there. Other days, if I'm gone on a Saturday, I'm still renting it out. That, I think we're gonna have to look at that issue because I've definitely... That, I think we're going to have to look at that issue, because I've definitely heard we want owner occupancy. I've also heard some people say we want people to be on-site. I'm not sure if we can require that, but we'll look into it. Those seem to be kind of the larger issues. I think the one remaining issue is when we have something drafted, do you want it to come back to you first before it would go to the Plan Commissions? Or do you want us to necessarily take it to the Plan Commissions first? Because that, I mean, the process could be, bring it back to us as a village board first, so that we can kind of look at it without making it, you wouldn't make an ultimate decision on it necessarily, but then you could see something in writing and then make the decision, do we want to send it to the Plan Commissions or not?
My opinion on is that, that is, it seems like it's kind of an urgent issue in the community. I don't want to delay it two months because we have a meeting following the wrong day and it pushes it back another month. So I don't know how our, the two Plan Commissions and the Village Board and the Westport Board, how those meetings fall, but I, I think there's a sense of urgency, at least from what I see.
So I would ask, so, from Tom Wilson, his letters to us, the town of Westport, I think is feeling about the same way as this board and body is. And I believe it's important that we work with them, because they may have something we miss.
Mm-hmm.
That they're, that they're going to come with. Does that mean it should go to Plan? That puts the two bodies together right away, as opposed to we're trying to make a decision, they're trying to make a decision, and they may not go like this.
Yeah, I, I would say this. I mean, I, the best scheduled approach then, and to kind of become, you know, to answer both your questions, may be to say, look, the goal is to get this on the agenda for the September Plan Commission and Joint Plan Commission meetings. We would be working, you know, we would be in contact with Tom, obviously, before then. I, I do think it's a joint issue. I mean, there is the possibility that, you know, especially if it's licensing, that the town may want to regulate, the village or town may want to regulate it a little bit differently. That's one of the benefi...[725.82][725.82](laughter) I don't think I'm out of time.[728.12][728.12](laughter)
Wait, wait, you're...
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's actually one benefits of the licensing process, is it, it gives each municipality a little bit more authority. If it's zoning, we necess, you know, through the, through the joint planning.
Which is where I was going with that. So we talked about zoning.
Yeah.
If we do the zoning, zoning jointly, we can also do our own licensing, if we want to be different, or is that...
I, I, we need to look into that. I mean, you know, the example I would give is if someone wants to operate, so someone has to come to the village and get an alcohol license. And then if they want to have outdoor service, then they have to get a conditional use permit. But the, the license itself and the conditional use permit are different in that you don't need, you know, the conditional use permit is only to be able to serve outside. You already have the alcohol license. One of the things that we need to take a look at is, can you, do you even have the authority to have essentially the same regulations, both in a license and in a conditional use permit? Because then it seems like you're essentially requiring two approvals for the exact same conduct. And so I'm not going to tell you right away that we can't do it, but that's the, that's the potential issue I see with licensing and a conditional use permit, particularly if essentially you have the same, if, if you can do the same thing in both, it would seem to make sense to only have one process.
So as their attorney, what are you advising us to do then, if we're looking to...
It sounds to me like you guys want to go to the Plan Commission first. So I think what we do is, we, uh, what?
September Plan.
Yeah, September Plan Commission. We sit down and we talk to Tom, we get some ideas. I mean, we've already looked at, I've already have in hand, Ashwabanon has a licensing ordinance, the village of Ashwabanon, to deal with Packer parties. I can tell you that the village of Mount Horeb has adopted a conditional use permit ordinance, and the village of Mount Horeb adopted a room tax ordinance, so that they have room tax for the short-term rentals in the same way as the hotels. Though neither of those ordinances are the be-all, end-all on the different process that they've used, but we will research and gather information, knowing that we want to start with, or bring before the Plan Commission, the most stringent regulations that we can. You always have the ability to walk back from them a little bit if, if, once you see the language, you want to change it a bit.
So that, that Plan Commission date is the ninth of September that evening. Brian, could you just touch quickly on, for folks in the audience or those watching, what is the public hearing process? Where does the public still have opportunity to weigh in?
So if we do, if we are going to amend our code such that obtaining a conditional use permit for short-term rentals, we necessarily are going to have to change our zoning code to do that. And we always have a public hearing before the village board when we change our zoning code. That's noticed by a Class II notice. And our practice is, before we have the village board meeting, that would have to go to Plan Commission, and in this instance, probably Joint Plan Commission, and we would have a public hearing before both of those bodies. When it comes, if we're going to do licensing, state statutes would not require us to have a public hearing before we change our code, because we wouldn't be changing the zoning code. But we would have the ability, just like tonight, we had a public hearing that, that was authorized the village board. You could choose to have a public hearing before any ordinance for licensing is amended.
The ninth, however, specifically, would not be a public hearing date?
No, the ninth would not be a public hearing date, because we're, we're, I, I don't imagine that we are going to be in a position to ask for action on the ninth. I think probably the quickest way that this is going to happen would be taking some, something in draft form before the Plan Commission, Joint Plan Commission in September. If you wanted, we could also bring it to you for discussion purposes at the second September meeting, but, and then we could, you know, at that point, you might have an idea whether or not you want to do zoning change or licensing. I think that we will be in, well, I don't want to promise anything, but I think the quickest that we would be in a position to modify our code would be in October. And, and, and that's whether we're going to use a Plan Commission process or not. Yes, we, yeah, there's notice requirements, essentially, especially for changing the zoning code.
Everybody go with that timeframe, process?
Yeah, because I think we need to, I'd love to have it, have it right now, but I think we want to make sure, especially if it's a new state law, I don't want to do something that we don't include everything we need in it, and it comes back to us and only delayed three more months, so...
Yeah, I want to do it right, if we're going to do it. We should be absolutely doing this the right way, especially since we're kind of going against the state law at this point, which is a...
Well, no, no, we're not, we're not going to go against the state law. We're going to act within the confines of the state law.
Yeah.
The intent. Break a strike, the intent.
But here's the one other thing I want to make clear, though, that, that, that's on the regulatory side, can, you know, number of people renting, things of that nature. The room tax issue, I believe, is strictly a village board issue. And so I would not anticipate taking the room tax issue to the Plan Commissions. I think that that's something that just comes to you, and that's not, that would not be something that, if, 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 we've made other changes to our room tax ordinance in the past, and we would, we don't take that to the Plan Commission. And so that's something that we could do in a, in, we could do that in September if you wanted.
We should, do we have to notice that then, or do we have to...
Doesn't need to be noticed, but we, we need to prepare the ordinance, and it's not going to be that difficult, and then just bring it, bring it to you.
Should we do that right away?
I agree with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Are you, everybody okay with that?
I'm sorry, September.
Right away. Okay.
Okay.
There's enough guidance?
It is from everybody?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for coming in and making their comments tonight as well. All right, on to our next topic.
Chris, did, Chris, do you want to take just a brief recess?
Well, I figured they all wanted to stay for the rest.[1094.72][1094.72](laughter) Wow.
Not very Minnesota.
Shrinkage. Shrinkage. That crowd's going. Okay, we're back in our meeting. It's eight forty-four.
Seven forty-four.
Our next item.
Seven forty-four.
Seven forty-four, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Our next public hearing we have is Public Hearing and Discussion Action. Gerald Schutz, fifty-five forty, Aaron Road, Town of Westport, to rezone from County Road, County R1 to Village R1, to bring existing residents into compliance with setback regulation and allow construction of a garage addition. Kevin, I'm assuming that's you?
Introduction, the property owners request it, because this property is in the joint planning area, to rezone it from County R1, when that means County R1, Village County R1, it's a temporary zoning classification, to bring it into compliance with the Village R1, which then will allow for this garage to be constructed legally. The Joint Planning Commission recommended approval as well as the town board.
Board members, any questions?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I'll open the public hearing for anybody who'd like to address this issue.
I do not have any slips.
Okay. If I hear none or see none, I will close the public hearing. Board members, any comments, questions?
I was in Westport yesterday and looked at the property and talked to a couple of landowners in the area, and they kind of shrugged their shoulders and said, oh yeah, that house, it looks reasonable to me. If the village of West, or the town of Westport is approving it, I would make a motion to go along with Westport's approval.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Phil, second by Gary.
Additional discussion yet. Just for clarification?
Yes.
This will leave the house with four garage stalls? Is that true?
I didn't look at that, so I don't know.
Okay.
Right now, they have one of those, they say almost two-car garages.
Yeah.
So now they will have room for three cars.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ice, have it. Next, we have Public Hearing and Discussion Action on Certified Survey Map for Quality Machining, Inc., 1001 Unique Drive.
So quality machining is expanding, and as part of that expansion, they need to adjust the lot line? So they've asked for, and, and they've got a recommendation from the Plan Commission for their expansion, as well as this change into the lot configuration. So the Plan Commission has recommended approval.
Okay, then I'll open up the public hearing for anybody who'd like to address on this issue. Any forms?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Uh, yeah, Plan Commission was unanimous in their vote for this.
I would move for approval.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg.
Second.
Second by Joe.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Great company, very generous, pay their employees well, and been a good citizen since day one.
Yeah.
And I was impressed with the discussion with utilities to get all that stuff done.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ice, have it. Our last public hearing, in discussion action on a request for, by Arboretum Village LLC for preliminary plat at the corner of Hogan Road and Quinn Drive. Kevin?
The Plan Commission has recommended approval of the preliminary plat for Arboretum Village LLC with a number of conditions, and those conditions included satisfaction of comments in the Strand email dated July 30th, 2019, approval of the proposed park dedication by the Parks Committee that's not been resolved yet, so this is conditioned upon their appearance in front of the Parks Committee and getting their approval, and approval of the easements necessary by Wanakee Utilities.
Okay, then I will open up the public hearing on this item. Any slips?
Nope.
Anyone like to speak? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from board members for staff?
Feels like there's a decent amount to do here yet.
Mm-huh.
And, I, I mean, that's the reason for the conditions, I think. In other words, it, it is a preliminary plat, and essentially, when the final plat, there's still going to be a process for the final plat to have to come before you. And so all of the issues that Kevin identified will have to get resolved before the final plat comes back to you.
I believe that the Parks Committee is seeing this on Wednesday.
Seventh, yeah. Wednesday, is it seventh? Is that to address, there's the one...
Proposed park dedication.
Well, there's the piece on the corner of Hogan, and what goes through there?
The Teddy Bear?
The, yeah.
Teddy Bear Woods?
The Teddy Bear Park, Teddy Bear Woods.
Yep. As well as easements with Wanakee Utilities. Tim, do you have any comments for us tonight?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add at this point? Okay. And I was in the tech staff meeting when we talked to a strand about these, and so they're, we're just basically making sure we have everything buttoned up.
Yeah. Yeah, given all the comments that are on there, I would move to conditionally approve the preliminary plat with the conditions listed.
Motion by Joe Zitzelberger.
I would second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ice, have it. Next on our license and permits, discuss and take action on original alcohol beverage license application for Kinsel Hospitality Group, LLC, doing business as Boston's The Gourmet Pizza.
Included in your packet was an application that identifies a new business filing for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors. This is Boston's pizza. They're going to be located in Keel Kenny Farms on the corner of Highway Q and Waterworks Road. Last I talked to them, they're anticipating open is in September. So this is also, they're requesting their license to be approval. This was noticed in the newspaper. This is a reserved Class B license for the village. This is one of those that requires a $10,000 initial application fee. So staff recommends, staff and police recommend approval of the original alcohol beverage license applications, subject to possession of the current seller's permit, payment of outstanding liquor bills, and payment of all outstanding bills or monies owed to the village.
Any questions, or do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Bill Random to approve.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ice, have it. Second, license, discuss and take action on operator license application for Tommy J. Heben.
Um, staff recommends denial of the operator license application for Tommy J. Hebit Heben, consistent with the policy for review of operator's license applications.
Is that a move denial?
Yes.
Move denial.
Second.
Motion by Bill Random to deny, second by Joe Zitzelberger. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ice, have it. Next, we have discuss and take action on operator license applications for Anna Mani, Mani, Miranda Leonard, Skylar Lainberger, Derek Kinsel, Otto Cliffcorn, Jennifer Devlin, and Jacob Bethke.
Staff recommends approval of the operator license listed in this, in the president's honor just listed, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wanakee Police Department.
Move approval.
Motion by Bill Random.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ice, have it. Under new business, we have discuss and take action on resolution authorizing the redemption of $2,300,000 Water Works and Electric System Mortgage Revenue Bonds Series 2010. Mr. Tim Herlitska.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just be brief. We routinely review the debt that we have outstanding at the utility. We have over $9 million right now. We discussed the interest rates on this debt with Ellers, our financial advisor. is about 2.5 percent and we're paying over 4 percent. We decided to forego the fees associated with having to do the refinancing, which would be about $85,000. And when you consider the fees, it, it didn't make it as, as worthwhile to go in and re, to, to refinance it. So we took to the Utility Commission the recommendation to use some of the existing cash on hand to, to pay off the debt on its call date on October 1st. And there are a couple schedules in here that talk about the amount of cash we have available before the possible refinancing and then after. And after, we still have funds available that would be greater than the benchmark set by the Utility Commission. And the recommendation that was put forth to the Utility Commission that was approved unanimously was to pay off the debt at October, on October 1st. And there is a resolution that goes along with this that is from bond counsel, and the recommendation to the, to the village board tonight is to approve the resolution to pay off the debt.
Do you, if you have any questions?
You told the commission, you know, was unanimous, seems like the right, right thing to do.
So do you want to make the motion on the resolution?
I would make a motion to, uh, get the right language here. I'm gonna miss it.
Approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of $2,300,000 Waterworks and Electric System Mortgage Revenue Bonds Series 2010. That's what you said. And I second your motion.
Gary, is that what you were saying?
That's what I was saying.
Okay, so Gary made the motions, Phil read it and seconded it.
Just kudos to everybody involved in-
Perfect.
Figuring all this out is, yeah, it's well summarized and, and very solid. Thank you.
Good job, Tim. Good job, Gary.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Next, we have discuss and take action on scope of work by Addy Advantage for Economic Development Website Updates. Todd?
Uh, we have money budget and the economic development budget this year to do a number of updates to our economic development program, one being taking a new look at the economic development website, which was created eight years ago, largely unadjusted since then. So we got good life out of this site. The company in fact that we used to gen, to create the site out of the gate was Addy Voltage, I think they changed their name to Addy Advantage now, based out of Madison, a big name in economic development and marketing within the, the industry. So the, the main reason for the change, one, is that Civic Plus, our hosting company, the backbone of our website, is no longer supporting the, the backbone that this particular page was built on. So either we build a new site and take on that work and added cost beyond what we're proposing here, or the option we're proposing is to take that content, update it with the help of Addy Advantage, and then essentially create a sub-page within our existing website. So it won't be standing alone, it'll be under the Wanakee.com portal page with the updated content and page development that Addy Advantage would help us with. So the proposal is for $7,500 for completion of that work, and staff recommends approval so we can get that done quickly.
Questions from the board members?
So with all-
Money coming from?
Uh, we budgeted in the 2019 economic development budget.
So I would only ask, um, they're not a Wanakee company, correct?
They're, they're based out of Madison.
Do we have any locals that would be interested in this work, and did we give them the opportunity?
They, we, what is, the work that Addy Advantage is gonna be doing is to be reviewing and updating our economic development specific content, not necessarily designing the webpage. So their, their work is to update the content, and they're experts in the field of economic development, marketing, and content development. We don't have a company that does that in Wanakee per se. We have other web developers, but-
All you needed to start with. We don't have that in here in Wanakee.
Okay.
That would be great, so.
I'd like to get more clarification on that then, because I was pretty sure that bid includes 10 pages or something?
They'll be, they'll be generating the content for those, for those 10-
Specific to the content of those pages.
Yeah, they're, they're focusing on the content.
Okay.
We'll be working with them to, I mean, certainly build it into the structure of the existing page.
Okay.
But they're, they're adding, they're adding content up to 10.
Okay.
And along with that, the economic development committee hasn't met for some time. Right?
Correct.
It should meet.
Well, a, as I've reported to the board, there's a number of questions that, that I have about the purpose and function of the committee, and my suggestion to the board was to suspend its use until we have our strategic planning work upon a new board member being assigned. So what I'd like to see the board do, which we'll talk about soon within the next couple of months, is complete a bigger picture strategic plan because I, that, that really relates to the heart of the way in which we have or have not used citizen members on an economic development group. And I would like us to get clarification there, and if it's the desire of the board, make better use of that, that group. So I, I do agree with you that we gotta, we gotta figure that one out, Phil.
We got some members that came to me and said, hey, why are we sitting?
And they've, they've received that same answer. I've communicated with all the existing appointees to the EDC about that.
Good.
Who's communicating with the businesses right now, then? What's, what's going on? Is this a single-
The function out of the administrator's office.
So it's a single point thing?
Mm-huh. And it, it has been before. That, that's not any different.
It just, the, the board sent a, the committee gave him some marching urn orders and-
So this is another issue that we're gonna address off into the future?
Yep.
This isn't really this, so I think we gotta stay-
Right.
Tighten it up or something?
Tighten it, yes. So, do we have a motion for this?
I'll move, we approve the scope of work with Addy Advantage.
Motion by Aaron Moran.
I'll second.
Second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Our last item is discuss and take action on proposal for a compensation study with Gov HR USA.
So in October of 2014, when I previously worked for the village, we adopted an organization-wide compensation strategy for all non-represented employees. This is basically everyone who's not in the union contract or otherwise employed by a board or commission. The strategy outlines the village's compensation system and philosophy to help attract, retain, and reward individuals that can help us build a successful service-based organization. The strategy outlines our compensation plans and annual performance evaluation process. One of the guiding principles of the strategy is external market competitiveness, and it's important that our compensation plan is well positioned against the external markets that we can attract and retain highly talented employees. It's good practice for an organization to periodically conduct a compensation study of external market to ensure our pay plan remains competitive and relevant. The last external data collection and position analysis was completed in 2014 when we adopted that compensation strategy. Since adoption, the village has awarded annual market-based adjustments to the pay plan to reflect overall market conditions, but we have not conducted a formal external review of our, of our marketplace. Staff, Todd and I are proposing that the village board approve the attached proposal for a compensation study with Gov HR USA. This proposal would include all 43 positions in the plan and update the plan as necessary to enable the village to continue to be attracting and retaining quality personnel. It is proposed that the study will take nine weeks and will include that survey of the external market. Gov HR is a leader in public sector, both compensation plans and recruitment. The budget impact of this, it, the work is estimated to cost $8,000. In 2018, the village received a dividend check from our insurance company in the amount of $3,811,200.
$3,8,000.
$3,8,112,000. This revenue was not budgeted for, and we're proposing to use this unexpected revenue as the funding source for this compensation study. Anything you'd like to add, Todd?
Um, it, I think it, one could look at the work that we're proposing and, and ask